Three questions.
So, ready to leave, buddy?
Yes.
All right. Evening, everyone. Kerry John, Board Vice President here, filling in for President Teresa Ray. She is running a few minutes late, so we'll get this started by calling the meeting order and having the, or stand for the budget.
Let's do the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republicans, then, one nation under God, indivisible, the creating charter of our law. Please remain standing for the land acknowledgeable statement. The Salamaka City Central School District acknowledges the homeland of the Ananda Wapka, the people of the Great Hill, the Seneca people, on whose ancestral and modern day land Salamaka School District now stands and on whose water we enjoy. We stand with all indigenous peoples in their resolve to remain connected to their land. While we cannot undo what has been done, it is the goal of the Salamaka City Central School District to recognize the history and make improvements that will benefit the next seven generations of indigenous students. Thank you.
All right. So we'll move on to approving the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
There are a three changes. Some are a couple typographical errors. So since it was published on Friday, we corrected a misspelling for intermittent, which is associated with Lori pencil on the personnel action number one. We changed confidential managerial or CM as it was a CS previously. We added the word stipend to the salary amount for Mrs. Beverly Pond. We removed a anticipated appointment for a 12 month cleaner who has accepted a position in another district. And Mr. Haley, so John Haley, has been moved into a separate action item. And the word stipend has been connected to the salary amount on the agenda. Other than those, there are no other changes.
Okay. So do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion second.
I heard a motion by Dale, second by Ted. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Dave, Dave, what's your carry? All right, we'll move on to communications.
No one is asked to talk.
Oh, okay. From Title VI, no real updates, other than I hear we have a new Title VI director?
Corrected the project director who has been assigned and funded through Title VI started on January 6th.
January 6th?
I'm sorry, December 6th. Thank you. Yes. Mr. Gill, we met with Mrs. Giannici and I yesterday, and I believe has been working with Mr. Schiff, as well as Ms. Red Eye, and we're looking forward to seeing him tomorrow night at Title VI.
Awesome. Looking forward to it as well. You're right. Okay, so what do we have for central office message?
All right, Giannici?
I just have a couple of updates. I just want to thank some people on our team. Nikki Beaver, she started a team leaders group. Our team leaders currently are in a role where they're kind of managers of information. We're trying to form that role into building leadership capacity within. Nikki met with both buildings and brought all the team leaders together to outline some new roles and responsibilities for curriculum alignment, communication, and just overall building leadership capacity within. So I want to thank her for that work. She's currently doing a book study with them also called Dare to Lead by Ronnie Brown. I also want to thank the principals for their efforts with family engagement. Are starting in December, Prospect Elementary will start hosting a grade level, grade level engagement opportunities. Our first one is pre-K with penguins and pancakes. Kindergarten will be hosting a maker space, type event for kids to show off their work with their parents, same with UPK. We will also be hosting a family reading night on February 2nd. That's a joint effort between both buildings and it will be housed at Seneca intermediate school, and we will be working with our PTO to help assist with the various activities. Chris, I want to thank Chris. He will be looking into high school. Will you?
You should volunteer.
Wondering himself.
Oh.
Remember, can I ask you something? Chris is going to have high school students, several of the stations, the crafts, the book stations and things like that, so we can integrate our high, remember that, integrate our high school students. And that's just basically it. His family engagement is at the top of our list right now, and I'm proud of all of them for their work.
Good, good. Thank you. Karen, I see you're hiding on the screen.
I am. I'm multitasking here. I really don't have any updates. We're just trying to meet deadlines as usual without the state reporting requirements and stuff. So other than that, it's par for the course, I guess.
Okay, awesome. How's that free lunch program going? Are we making money still?
Oh, no, we are not.
Okay. We went upside down on that one, huh?
Yeah, we did. The self ops costs us a lot more. Food is better, but it costs us a lot more. One, because there's more staffing, et cetera, and secondly, because food prices are astronomical right now.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Chris, haven't heard from you in a while.
I knew you were gonna call me out. I'm taking notes right now. I'm like, oh, Kerry's in charge. So some of the things we've got going on, we're right now in the middle of planning for Regents Week for January 23rd, Regents midterm week. We do have, we have adopted in the high schools, some outside agencies, 42 families who purchase gifts for and deliver them on Monday, the 19th for the Christmas holidays. Today, I actually had some great conversation with the coaches about setting goals with eighth grade students in regards to NWA and ultimately their state assessments. And I hadn't finished the rest of the thoughts down there. I had some other things I was gonna put down. Oh, one of the things that we talked about at the last meeting was our algebra results. We have since that time, what I think was 12 students from study halls into an algebra intervention class and hopefully get them to the Regents Center.
Okay. All right, we'll come back to you if you think of anything else.
All right.
Lori, what do you got?
So I think this is my first presentation being at the high school, so I guess I'll just start with the student body. It's very impressive. We started the school year out with going in the halls, sweeping the halls, put together a sweep team to make sure students were in class. And basically, the point of that is to get students in class from here for teaching and learning. So the sweep team and security was kind of informed and we talked about the approach of it's not about bringing a kid if they're in the hall. It's about where he's supposed to be. Let's get you in class and then getting them in the class so that they can get the education they need. I feel that's going pretty well. Had a couple of student presentations since the start of the year. Some different, the same fractions that have come up that needed address. And we're looking to have more student presentations after we come back and kind of reboot. Sometimes those long breaks can be, you know, erased memories. So that's where we're at. Just keep plodding away. Our warrior students are doing an awesome job and our staff as well. And I think everybody's looking forward to the break.
Awesome. Is that Nikki Beaver that's hiding on the screen?
Hello, Kerry. How are you?
Good. How you doing?
Great. Things are going really well in my role that I have this year aligning elementary education. Like Mrs. Giannici said, I've worked with the team leaders recently, and we had a really excellent day focusing on curriculum and what excellent instruction should look like at Salamanca. As we move forward, we'll have a stronger, more specific focus on literacy. And one, you know, one thing I've really been working really hard over the last few months to do is get into every classroom and just look at and really dissect the instruction that's happening there, making sure we have rigor, high level questioning, and just really celebrating our students and making sure that we're, you know, celebrating the successes and not always focusing on what our students can't do, because there is a whole lot that they can, and we really need to focus on that. And I'm really excited as family engagement rolls out.
Harry?
I did not take my notebook. I'd like to paper, but we are just rocking and rolling on our way to a point in time. Everyone's getting ready to have a little refresh and reset over the next couple weeks. But we have a lot of really great things going on. We started EDF. And we have all sorts of brand extra activities going on. Maker space in the pantry. We've got crafty, we have diamond making art. All sorts of different things to get kids interested and involved outside of academics. We just finished our production of El Junior. We're not there, and I had a bunch of fantastic little elves up on stage. We had about 60 kind of different students that were in that. And we're getting ready to have our fourth band concert. So we're doing a great job outside of, you know, the regular activities today. They're really involved. And we're excited. There's a lot of restorative practices going on. Also, there's classroom push-ins. Franklin has been instrumental in having most sort of conversations with students here to here. Staff to students, staff to staff, trying to bring in on some things and resolve conflicts. They're really awesome here.
Awesome. Lynn?
Hey, how's everybody?
Good.
This year, being in different role than I am, equally prospecting Santa Cruz, it's been a, it's been different, but enjoyable, working with both Kim Holmes and Nikki and Erin. And so I did everything that Erin just said over at Seneca, and she brought up restorative practices, which I think could be a thing as well. And we have had quite a number of parents in the building come in to try to work with the parents and the students and the counselors together on their issues. So we're not just commenting on the telephone. We're actually inviting them in so it can feel like we're all a team, where we're trying to make some changes, you know, to help the students to be successful. It is quite a curve going from high school to prospect. Not as nervous anymore when I'm there, but I think everybody's ready for a break. So I am too, so right now that's all I can say, but it's been different. I appreciate the chance to try to experience this.
Awesome. Is Kim on or is that all? Is that all we see?
Yes.
Oh, okay. No Kim Holmes?
No, I just started off by saying all the students.
Oh, okay. Chris?
I have a couple more.
Yeah, there you go.
So yes, I want to reiterate what Erin said. The El Junior production was great last week. They did Thursday, Friday, Saturday. A week, high school concert is tonight, so after the board meeting, that one's down there. And then we do have Warrior Academy over on River Street. We recently hired two staff members, Mark Hill and Jaycee McCully, to go over and run our in-school and out-of-school suspension, provide more supports and education to those students instead of, you know, having them home, they have to go to actual school and use learning. That's been working out fantastic. We also have been doing a lot of restorative practice, reentry meetings with the students that have made bad choices and have to come back to us, and that's been working out real well.
And you probably are aware of this one, but Ski Club starts next week, so yeah.
Wasn't aware.
Yeah, it's coming up, so I think there's.
Snow first.
Monday and Tuesday. Seneca has a huge number of students. Awesome, 40 something.
What was it in high school?
Seneca school, I know it's 40 something. Unless you're, I don't know why I know that, but I do.
Okay, awesome. All right, let's go around the room. We got a new guy. Mike, introduce yourself and tell us about what you're up to.
Good evening. My name is Mike Pitt. I'm the director of the new mixed sports. Came here today to talk about the superintendent's thing. I don't know if we're gonna hold off on that for now, but right now, we're trying to attract some substitute teachers to our district, so it's an ongoing process to fulfill that void. And what we're working on now primarily.
Well, welcome. Chad, your turn.
Good evening, guys. How are we doing tonight? Today was picture day for our winter sports. That was a great, great outing. Our winter sports are going fairly well. Basketball, bowling, cheer, wrestling, indoor track has attracted quite a few new athletes to the winter, winter scene. Azad is doing archery and hockey. On January 9th, we are gonna host a NCAA eligibility presentation in the LGI. Just to get some of our parents and community members and student athletes aligned with what's necessary to participate in sports at the next level. I'm just seeing a little bit of a lag between expectations versus the reality of the situation. We want to get that message out there to our families, kind of make that more of a seasonal thing to make sure everyone's on the same page, just promote that there are plenty of opportunities out there to participate. Other than that?
Academics first, though, right?
Of course.
Yeah.
Yeah. Takes a lot of advice. You know, to slide scale from the grades and your testing. It is, academics will make it much easier.
Okay, awesome. Same here. Well, have you had to do this before? All right, introduce yourself and tell us what you're up to.
At this point, so we're doing a mid-year refresh and looking high at what we're gonna be doing to support students around to support from at the ELA. We also want to welcome Erin and Asia, who was court approved a couple of meetings ago. She's serving as our NTFS coordinator at Seneca, and we really need her expertise and knowledge and leadership. This one, hopefully, anchored, playing the team. And then you're gonna be hearing about a soft launch of a software program called Unified Insight, in which there's a NTFS intervention tracking part of it. What it does is it brings together the many things that are in our student information system and allows us to visualize that data from various points of view, like district, building, class, group, individual. But it brings many things that we have within Power School into one place that does it in a way that we can look at the data rather than charts. And so that's going to be a part for us to see that data and then also track our.
Thank you. Just FYI, every time I'm running to show up here, I go around the room.
I know. I tried to write it seriously.
Teammate is, she doesn't do that. Ray, what do you got for us?
The armed security guard will be starting hopefully sometime beginning of January. We're partnering up with Cat County again in January. They're gonna be doing some PCC training, kind of like stop, believe, or polyagmatic training. We started off, we opened it up to just the security guys. And then we decided to open it up to everyone and Bobby who, who Cat County Emergency Services said we've got 40 people signed up for it already. So that's a good thing. Like, we got some kids from emergency management class. They're gonna go through it. We're all, we gotta do one more lockdown before December 33rd, and we'll be all caught up with our requirements for evacuation and lockdown drills. Prospect is actually, they're caught up for up until December. We've gotta do one lockdown and. Who else? He's been working on safety plans. We've got a couple of lawyers. Anthony Ellis, who is an SRO. I mean, whatever, you know, through that, we're a pioneer. He's got world-class security and Andy Sawyer, who's.
What about all fire drills? Are we good for?
Yeah, we're good on fire. We're gonna have eight for eight fire drills, more lockdown drills for the year by December 31st. We gotta have six and two. So we got our fire drill.
Okay, so what, after the second half of the year, you only have to do two and two? Oh, okay. That makes sense. From both of them. Annie?
So I'm kind of, I'm going to change it. They go hand in hand. So for professional development here, there are two big things going on here. But right now, we've been talking about what we want to train and what we're gonna, what we're gonna do in the summer. He was Giannici and the principal on that type of thing, team leader, what they need, but I put out a survey. And for all the STA at this point, but we're gonna go on. I need to presentation out to everybody to see what anybody. We are also, like Mr. Seaver said, they were working on some full study here on their. You know, even younger, the kid like, you know, this is what I have, fully understand their data. There's a huge exercise they call it, you might need to have kids own their own data. I've been doing a lot with the coaches, you know, they're putting in, working on writing, literacy, math, just trying to get things more hands-on, especially learning. I've met with the, the American curriculum team about, they have shown, getting on our data, you know, the same with H2, like working into, you know, more into the question, into integrating, looking at, they're actually gonna join us at our science training, look at the new science assessment, some investigations the kids have to do. Science tests that are coming up. We're gonna be going in first, I get your own sort of practices training, which will be starting this summer, which most likely now, a lot of the teachers who have not been trained now, they're all gonna be trained this summer. Like we said, we're, you're, and then that we have with this sort of solutions.
That's it? Okay. Marcy?
Hi, Kerry.
Hi.
And everybody. Um, right now, I'm working on pulling together a cybersecurity response team in case something should happen. What can we do as a district squad? I know. Of all the people here, I said Chris, absolutely. Also, working as supporting classrooms and instructional spaces, aligning the technology they need in those spaces to the instruction or activities that are actually happening there. I'm finishing up a lot of my data privacy contracts, which are burdening, to say the least. And I've been meeting with grade levels and departments on different programs we have and how to work through cybersecurity and those pieces. And just the day-to-day functions of everything that happens. We fix everything that breaks and goes wrong. So it's, it's, it's good. It's fun. It's exciting. So if you have any issues with technology and only technology, and they don't fix random things, that has to have some kind of wire transmit some kind of information, we will fix it over again. So it's, and we're busy. They want, so it's great stuff. And Chris comes in, pokes us at the door and says, hey, so. This is how the conversation always starts. Hey, so, yeah.
And what'd you bring?
Can you help? And it's always, it's always nice. I like, it's never anything, you have broken anything, yeah.
Very awesome. Last but not least, definitely not least, Levi?
So we've been working, Mrs. Giannici, Bob Shipman, who we have contracted to help Power School customization, getting the elementary report cards, you know, situated where we want them to be aligned with their state standards. You know, like that portlay, it might try to get a handle on everything. You know, Marcy was able to purchase a program for us that is easily designed, very poor cards. The current system we have, you have to measure down the X, Y axes and try to figure out how long the line is gonna be and fit everything in there with this new program. Everything is just drag and drop and it wraps and it just fits accordingly. So it's clearly gone from days of designing report card to 25, 30 minutes, hour. But we're just working on moving the rest of it, what, four, five, six done. Bob and I have been able to do special customizations for Kristen and getting some easier forceful for her for state reporting. I know they're now going through course descriptions and making sure that all of the department's aligned with each of the courses that we offer for that next state.
Sorry? I'm sure there's more. Yeah. All right. Well, I will relinquish the run of the meeting here to Madam President.
Wow, thank you.
And we were just finishing up central office message. We got a big central office. All right. We're on, we're on board.
All right. Well, we'll start at the end. How about a flip?
Well, after all of that, I started a new job in the Senate Nation, but you know. I just want to say, I really appreciate, because every, every time we're together, I appreciate all the part of you that you're doing. You know, you're committed to that thing, but in particular, this time, you saw some of the successes that you're having with parent engagement. It's probably one of the most critical pieces in the education process and stuff. Sounds like numbers are coming in and numbers are growing up, and there's more parents here in school and such, so just keep it up and have a wonderful break.
Thank you. Chad?
No, I just, same thing. I'm glad to hear everybody's enthusiasm and positivity, and everybody's looking for that break, which, you know, everybody's well deserved. Kids like it, teachers like it, which is good to hear that everybody has a focus that they're already looking for afterwards. In the paper today, if you guys didn't read it, the ELA and mass scores have been released. We didn't do so well in some spots. We have less room to improvement, but hearing all you guys talked earlier, it sounds like there's starting to be a lot of focus on that, which is very, very encouraging. The, oh, we can only be excused so long, and we got the resources and the know-how, and seems like the teams are doing. Let's try to get it together for a case in the future.
Awesome. Brad?
I just wanted to show my appreciation for the opportunity to attend that NAFAS conference last week, not because I was invited, but. There was a lot of interesting presentations. It's crazy to see some of the professionals. People deal with the chances I had to just even get kids to school. There's districts southwest that are having paid roads. One educator presented and this, she got done and she explained how she probably spent a lot of time in the shower because she doesn't have running water at home, and I was like, it's crazy. Very interesting.
I guess this, this being our last meeting before the break, I just want to wish everybody a happy holiday season. Please enjoy the families as much as you can and all the trees and safe.
Kerry?
I just want to thank everyone for all the hard work that you've been putting in. You know, it's, we got another principal here. Just a whole, we'll get back to it. Yeah. But I wanted to thank everybody for all the hard work that you do, all of our staff, everybody. You know, it's, it's not an easy task, and we know that thanks and congratulations don't come often enough, but thank you. And congratulations for doing a very hard job and doing well and doing with grace. Appreciate it. Also, in the spirit of the season, you know, I, I want to say thanks to my colleagues. You know, I, I know how much you guys get paid. You know, and it's, it's, it's a tough job we do sometimes, and it takes dedication, but you all are showing the dedication to, you know, commit to improving our kids' educations. So thank you, guys, with all of you, and also thank our administrators. So, happy holidays.
Happy holidays to everyone. Congratulations to the performance of Alpha. I heard it was fabulous. I think that's awesome. Sometimes we recognize our athletes, where we forget to go on and recognize our band and our chorus and all of our drama productions too, and they're equally just as awesome. So congratulations to all the students. And I would like to say thank you again to all of the administrators, the staff, the students for putting in the hard work. We know our test scores need to come up. And we recognize that, and we know that we're working on, we've got a plan in place to, to help us get to where we want to be. And we can sit here and try to say, oh, we're not that bad, or, oh, we're doing just fine. And, um, we can sit here and try to say, oh, we're not that bad or, oh, we're doing just fine, but knowing where we're at, knowing where we need to be, recognizing that and having goals to get us to where we wanna be is what we need to do as a board and to direct the administrators, to direct the staff, to help the students get to be where they need to be and to be able to achieve what they want to achieve. So thanks, everybody for working together. Um, like Carrie said, you know, you do thank your board members and the administration and the staff. It's like, we all have to work together and it does take a community to raise a kid and that's what we're trying to do the best way that we can. So thank you, everybody. And I would also like to wish everybody a happy holiday uh, for whatever you celebrate. And with that, I will.
Well, can I take Sue's turn? Please, you just reminded me, I forgot something. Chad, you touched on it. Um, you know, I'm glad you brought up that you're gonna be working with our athletes who are on academics and getting to that next level. Uh, and I just wanted to say, this is something that I try to do in the outside community as well. And just this weekend was a unique opportunity. I, I run a club girls lacrosse program and we play over the winter up at Salins in Elmo. Uh, our varsity team, which is a mixture of twelve-year-olds, up to eighteen-year-olds, just because the numbers are light, that's the mixture we have. But we went up to play at noon up at Salins this weekend. And I already knew going in, but a lot of the girls didn't. Um, the Hondo Shoney Nationals men's team was doing your tryout practice this weekend at Salins on Saturday and Sunday. They had prayed to say noon on Sunday and our granddad was happy to be showing up because a lot of these guys are walking in for their trial practices. We are literally talking about some of the best lacrosse players in the world. And I mean that, the world. Playing under that same rule. So after the game, I had a handful of whom who wanted to go in there and kind of just watch the practice for a little while. And I said, absolutely. It's open. We can go watch. And they wanted to, they wanted to see that. It's that, you know, it's that starstruck thing like, oh my God, there's superstars in there. Is that Williams in there? He's, he's right there. Yeah. You know, you, you have all these superstars who are on the Nationals team. And these girls are in there, they are, they're literally starstruck. Wow, I'm like, yeah. I said, we do that for the girls too, though. The girls play on the national level as well. This is one of them things that I always try to relate back to. There's opportunity out there, like Chad, you were talking about. There's opportunity, you know, keep the grades up. You can get into those schools. You could try that opportunity. It's always an educational opportunity I look at whenever something like that comes up. And I took the advantage to turn it into an educational opportunity. Girls, this is what you can aspire to. This is something you can do. You know, these guys, best in the world, they're practicing practically in their backyard. How often does that happen that you get to see the best in the world in your neck of the woods? And it's literally what we have there. You know, this also comes, um, Saturday, we had our tribal council session. Flip was there. Uh, we had Orin Lyons who would come to our tribal council session Saturday. Now, Orin Lyons was coming to thank the Seneca Nation for a generous donation that they give to the Nationals team. And it's one of those things where you recognize the opportunities. Flip and I had a long discussion about the opportunities, actually. Um, but you tie that all together. You see what can happen. You know, it's the best in the world we're talking about and these kids are locally grown. Uh, someone in the audience asked Orin, what is your pool of players that you can draw from? And he said, for the men's team, it's a pool of two hundred. I've been showing Nationals pull from two hundred players to create the best in the world on a team. They said, well, what about Team USA? He said, five hundred thousand. Five hundred thousand athletes to pull or to pull from for their pool for the best in the world. Those are steep odds. And our men have typically been third in the world. Pulling from two hundred players. That shows enormous talent, potential and opportunity that we have here locally. You know, that's on the boy side of things, but it's also there for the girls as well. This is just one of those avenues that you always try to turn into a learning experience and show these kids there is opportunity, you know, especially lacrosse is so huge in our community. Well, guess what? They might be on the Olympic stage in four and a half years.
My best is going to sprays out there.
Mm-hmm. So that's just something to think about, you know, especially Chad, when you're talking to these kids. You know, that's why I asked you, academics first, right? It is. They're not gonna get anywhere if they don't have the grades. We gotta instill that in them. That they practice their homework just as hard as they practice for the game. And they will get somewhere. We change that mindset that they will get somewhere by encouraging them in both avenues. So that's one of them things I just wanted to point out. You take that educational opportunity whenever you can. I'm not an educator by trade. I feel like I've stolen that profession from my wife, just listening to her for a couple of decades, but that's the reality. You turn the educational opportunity whenever you can. Whenever the opportunity presents itself, take it. So I just wanted to mention that. You reminded me when you mentioned that about the college thing and then I forgot when it was my turn to talk. So this was Sue's turn. Thank you all for listening.
Sure, just a moment to, um, continue, uh, the thankfulness that we have for our staff, um, and for our community. You know, the time between Thanksgiving, um, and our Christmas, New Year break is, can be challenging, uh, for our staff who every day are interacting with students and different families in the community have different, um, takes on what happens over the next several weeks. Um, and our community and our school district does an awful lot to support uh, our students and other community members well outside the responsibilities of their employment. And I just wanted to acknowledge that and, uh, thank those individuals who are helping um, others who at the time of Thanksgiving, uh, provided meals and as we approach Christmas and the new year, who are ensuring that, um, if Santa comes to a house, then Santa is definitely coming to every house in Salamanca. So, uh, I just wanted to again say thank you for that. Also, uh, tonight you're going to hear and approve a request for Mitchell Schnauffer to attend the New York State Honor Band. Um, that's a very prestigious, uh, appointment. So he has been, he tried out for and was selected to the essentially the all-state, uh, New York State, uh, band. And that is something that he competed with individuals across the entire state to, uh, for that position. So that's pretty significant. I also just wanted to take a moment to address some things that people have probably seen in the news lately. Uh, shortly after our last board meeting, the New York State Education Department released a memo indicating that all school districts utilizing a mascot referencing Native American heritage is to retire their mascot over the next two years. Shortly after President Armstrong released a statement supporting the state education department. And I'd like to be clear that the school district supports both the state requirements and the position of the Seneca Nation. While our district does not have a mascot, we are the Salamanca Warriors and utilize a logo of a Seneca mail. When these two are combined, there is a reasonable connection to associate warriors with Native Americans. And by definition, this puts our district in conflict with the directive from the state education department. During the month of January, the district will assemble a team of students, community members and representatives from the Seneca Nation who will hear from stakeholders throughout the community. At the conclusion of gathering input, this group will make a recommendation to the Board of Education. And the Board of Education will then determine how we are moving forward. I know that there are discussions around this topic that have already begun and I want to assure all those interested that this process will be completely transparent and the district will hear from all voices equally. Not just the loudest, and then we will do the right thing, even if it isn't the most popular choice. Um, now, in addition to that, and to make things more complicated, of course, um, about nine months ago, the district began a process that's commonly referred to as branding in the marketing sector. The intent was to help Salamanca School District clearly identify who we are and doing that through various colors, fonts and, uh, markings. As one walks throughout the district, we see ourselves identified in a variety of red and gray shades as well as various fonts. In order to provide some consistency, the district began working with Otherwise Creative, which is a marketing firm from Buffalo, to help identify what our school colors are, exactly what our font is, what are moving forward and to incorporate a letter mark that emphasizes Salamanca. Now, what you're seeing as we scroll through here is what is referred to as a branding manual. We now have very specific color of red that will be identified with Salamanca, a specific gray that will be identified with Salamanca, a font that is now going to be associated. All of this is important as we move forward with construction projects and uniforms and whatnot, so that we can provide some consistency across the district. So I'm very pleased to share that the work is complete. We now have what's referred to, as I said, as a branding manual. We also have what is referred to as a letter mark to emphasize Salamanca. Um, but I want to be very clear as we're moving forward. This work began well before the discussion about our name and logo and is not intended to replace either. So once again, this work is not replacing the Warriors or our Seneca logo. It is intended to be used in conjunction with so that as we begin to develop signage throughout the district with construction projects um, and we buy colors of uniforms, we now have a specific color font, letter mark that can be associated, uh, with Salamanca and provide some consistency. There were a variety of individuals who, um, worked through this, including administrators, parents, some community members and students, and I just wanted to express my gratitude, uh, to those individuals moving forward. Um, and again, this will essentially be put into the mix with, um, the discussions with regard to our logo uh, and our, uh, warriors over the next several months. Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to item four, which is our consent agenda. So we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Dale, second by Carrie. Were there any questions? All in favor? I opposed abstain, motion to red note, old business, under new business, we have our reserves, which we are going to use, um, for different funding. So they're listed below. Uh, so we need a motion to approve, uh, why we June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two reserves in funding.
Motion.
Sorry. You need that, was that Brad? Right, okay. Motion by Brad, second by Flip. Are there any questions? All in favor? I opposed abstain, motion Carrie. Item B is our budget transfer for our twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. So we need a motion to approve, uh, the budget transfers.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Carrie. Are there any questions on any of the budget transfers? All in favor? I opposed abstain, motion Carrie. Item C is our capital project allowance dispersment for, uh, thirty-three thousand, six ninety-eight to Uber Construction. So we need a motion to approve that allowance dispersment.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Dale, second by Flip. Are there any questions? All in favor? I opposed abstain, motion Carrie. Item D is our change, um, for our twenty-two, twenty-three calendar to revise a half day on March seventeenth to a half day on Tuesday, March fourteenth. So we need a motion to approve the school calendar revision.
Motion.
Sorry. Motion by Chad, second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor? I opposed abstain, motion Carrie. Item E is to create and abolish some positions. So we're creating, uh, four Sammy coordinators, seven Sammy teachers, an ESL, uh, teacher, uh, and a teacher's aide, and then we are abolishing a part-time clerk. So we need a motion to approve those creation and abolishing of positions.
Motion. Second.
Dale. Right. Motion by Brad, second by Dale. Are there any questions? All in favor? I opposed abstain, motion Carrie. Item seven A is our personnel consent agenda number one. So we need a motion to approve, uh, all the items on the personnel consent agenda number one.
Motion.
Motion by Dale. Who seconded that?
No, I'm, I made more motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion by Flip, second by Dale. Are there any questions?
I know.
All in favor? I opposed abstain, motion Carrie. Item C is our personnel, uh, consent agenda number two. So we need a motion to approve, uh, the personnel consent agenda number two.
Motion.
Motion by Chad, second by Brad. All in favor? I opposed, I will abstain, motion Carrie. And do we have any stats?
Um, we do not have anyone present or on screen, um, to welcome to the Word family, but as we see them in person, we'll make sure that we pass along our congratulations.
Okay. Item A is our board information report. So we have our uh, oh, yeah, I would. Dear Dr. Baylor and Board of Education, please accept my sincerest gratitude for funding and supporting my trip to Anaheim, California for the National Council of Teachers of English Conference. I feel privileged to work in a district that supports professional development in this capacity. And I look forward to embedding and sharing this incredible experience both within my classroom and among my colleagues. Thank you, Alexis Russell. Nice. Thank you. Our upcoming events, uh, we have our Indigenous Education Meeting, which will be tomorrow, uh, and right here. December fifteenth is the Seneca Intermediate Banding Forest Concert, six-thirty. Uh, December sixteenth, Stan's Workshop, uh, at Prospect Elementary Gym. December twentieth is our Finance Committee Meeting. And, uh, December twenty-second is the First Grade Holiday Concert, six o'clock at the Prospect Gym. Uh, and December twenty-third is our National Honor Society Tapping Ceremony. December twenty-sixth through the January second is our winter break. Again, happy holidays to everybody. And our next Board of Education meeting will be January tenth. And with that, I would like to, we need a motion, uh, to go into executive session for the purpose of a superintendent hearing appeal.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Dale, second by Carrie, all in favor? I opposed abstain, motion Carrie. Again, thank you, everybody. We're not gonna take any action coming back out. Uh, so happy holidays to everybody. Thank you for coming to the meeting tonight.